I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting Monday, September 16th, 2019. The court call the roll, please.
Mayor Berman.
Here.
Trustee Gaffino.
Here.
Trustee Lowry.
Here.
Trustee Curtis.
Here.
Trustee Martinez.
Here.
Trustee Gately.
Here.
No audience comments, trustee comments. Our first item discussion, Mr. Toth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one on the coming tonight is zoning petition 19-06, which is for the property at 345 Sullivan Road. We have received an application for a special use and map amendment for the subject property to be used as a dental veterinary clinic. The petition did go to the hearing before the Plan Commission at a public hearing on September 3rd where the unanimously recommended approval. Just a couple items that will be part of the petition, and I'll let the actual business operator come and speak to this in one second, but the request from the petitioner would be a map amendment to reason on the property from the OR district of the B2, and also to allows a special use in animal hospital and veterinary clinic. There is a 3,600 square foot building located on the property currently. Right now it's being used by Aurora Dental Specialists, 29 parking spaces, based upon the parking calculation, 11 spaces are required by codes, adequate parking there. Again, you have unanimous Plan Commission recommendation for approval. With that, I'll go ahead and let Dr. Doriga go ahead and introduce the use itself.
I'm a veterinarian from the Fox Valley area, owned River Heights Veterinary Hospital for 27 years down in Oswego. I've had a veterinary dental referral practice inside River Heights Veterinary Hospital for the last 14 years. The 345 Sullivan property is a place that I will relocate my dental referral practice to. I'm one of 150 board-certified veterinary dentists in the United States. So we service dogs, cats, police dogs for routine to advanced dental care, jaw fractures, root canals, crowns, high-risk anesthetic patients. The current facility is Aurora Dental Specialists. They have an oral surgeon and previously had endodontists, and the building really fits our workflow really well because we're a procedure-driven practice. We have 400 referring hospitals and pet owners from Northern Illinois District to Central Illinois, Indiana, and Wisconsin. We were looking for a piece of property on the I-88 corridor so that our referral clients can get easy on and off from the city, from the northern suburbs, and from the southern suburbs as well. Again, the 3,600 square foot building fits our needs quite well, and the parking is more than adequate. And it's a professional area that we were really looking for with Mercy Hospital, and most people know Fairview Dentistry, the large dental practice right down the road on Sullivan as well. So be welcome to entertain any questions?
No. You won't get your customers mixed up, will you?
Yeah.
Any other comments from the board?
No.
I think it's something that we were all in favor of. Item number two, our Fox River Dam, Mr. Bosco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have some members from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources here to give a presentation. If you recall, many of you were on the board back in 2015. We had an intergovernmental agreement in place between the Village of North Aurora, the Fox Valley Park District, and the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. At that time, the state had a program, and it was to clean up impaired waterways, and one of the ways to clean up impaired waterways, which the Fox River met that criteria, was to remove dams and allow the free flow of water and to return a river to its natural state. In doing so, we went to the board, and the board determined that the potential to remove the dam was significant, and that we entered into an IGA. That IGA was for, had a funding mechanism that was in it for approximately $3 million, all funded by the state. $500,000 of that was for engineering, 2.5 million was for demolition of the dam itself. The IGA was written in such a way that there were checks and balances put in place that the Village and the Park District both had to agree to move forward with the actual engineering. Then, we also had to review the engineering, and both parties had to still approve the next step after the engineering before the demolition of the dam could ever move forward. So once again, both entities had to approve a resolution starting the engineering process, and then another resolution after the engineering process to determine whether or not to move forward. And that safeguard was put in place primarily because the village was curious that if the dam was to go away, what effect would it have on the mill race next to the village hall, and how that moves down the rest and reforms back to the original channel. With that being said, the state, we learned that the state has funding available again. The reason that it never went through the first time was the state program, basically the funding was frozen almost immediately after we passed our IGA. The IGA had a two-year expiration on it, so after the second year, essentially, the IGA just dissolved. What we're looking to do tonight is, the IDNR is here, we've been informed that there's money in this current state budget for dam removal of impaired waterways, and as of right now, what we're looking to do is see if the village board is interested in reinvesting into an IGA with the Fox Valley Park District and the IDNR for the potential dam removal of the Fox River Dam. Tonight, not only do we have someone from the IDNR, but we also have someone here from the Fox Valley Park District. With that being said, if you'd like to give your presentation, the IDNR is going to walk through the benefits of the environment and removing dams.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stephen Bosco, and thank you, village trustees and village president for having us. As Steve kind of mentioned, the background, the story of that. So as mentioned, funding has become available. We did receive our letter from the Village of North Aurora inquiring into this opportunity, reopening an IGA for this dam removal possibility, and as regard, they've asked us to come speak to you all about the benefits of dam removal. So, Mike, if you could. So essentially, what we're going to talk about, I'm not sure if the village trustees, do you have a screen that you can see?
Yes.
Okay. I want to make sure before I start speaking. So we're here to talk about our primary concern, our primary benefit, in our OWR's opinion, is the public safety factor. So we're going to talk about that a little bit. We're going to talk about water quality in the Fox River system, aquatic habitat, fish passage, recreation, economic benefits of removing the dam, and then what would need to happen moving forward after this meeting tonight. So just a quick overview, the dam has about a six-foot height from headwater to tailwater, depending on the flow conditions of the dam. The dam itself is about 390 feet long. It's an OG spillway with a few steps on the face of the spillway, but for practical purposes, it acts much like a OG typical spillway. You guys may be familiar with the Yorkville Dam, where the IDNR Office of Water Resources constructed steps on the dam to make it safer. Those were designed with the help of the University of Illinois to ensure the safety. These steps on the North Aurora Dam don't quite meet that configuration. As a result, there has been, by our records, one drowning, at least, that has been recorded at the dam. The dam was meant, had a plaque that stated that was worked on in 1975, but we see this actually, the dam goes back to well over a century before that. So just a little background, if you could go back one to the previous slide. As you can see on your screen, there's a couple of, a lot going on here, but this is a conceptual plan that was done well back, I believe it was 2012, whenever the Governor's Dam Removal Initiative really started getting kicked off. So we had a widespread analysis of all the state dams, the state-owned dams, and this is just a concept level. Talks about some of the critical issues on this slide are going to be accessing the dam, and as mentioned, this is all conceptual. This is all what Mr. Bosco mentioned that'd be under discussion and approval. You know, how are we going to remove the dam? What's it going to look like after? How are we going to access the dam and minimize our impacts of the surrounding area? And then how is that going to be restored fully back to the park? As you guys have a beautiful setting here, and that was one thing that we talked about in length earlier this evening, is how to make sure that we keep that a beautiful amenity to the community as well. So that will all be addressed as we move forward. Okay, Mike? So first and foremost, we want to talk about public safety. I mentioned Yorkville Dam, but as well as North Aurora Dam, we have seen a number of deaths at dams like these, and this is primarily caused by the hydraulic roller. And this is a little figure of what's occurring within a hydraulic roller, and as we see moderate flows out on the Fox River today, it actually could show up very easily. If you go out there tomorrow, you'll see this exact action going, occurring. And what you see is as the water dips down and comes off the face of the spillway, there's actually a rolling action to where if you look out about 10 to 20 feet from the face of the dam, you see actually water drawing back towards the face of the dam. So we have this submerged roller occurring, and what happens with debris or, in the worst cases scenarios, if someone would get trapped in there, it keeps them pulled in close to that dam, and that's what makes this such a huge risk to the public. We've seen this in places such as Yorkville, Cankey, and other places where this roller is really a terrifying event whenever it comes to public safety. So it's further worsened by the scour hole that's developed. So sometimes there's an apron at the end of the dam, but that's often not even long enough to cover up that scour holes, as we've found in dams that we have started removing throughout the state. And we'll talk about that a little bit further, show you examples of dams that we have moved throughout the state. So what this risk of life is really, folks, or who's really at impact? We see a lot of watercraft going over these dams, they see high water, they won't get out on the whitewater rapids, we see that occurring. We see fishermen coming from the downstream end, and this is actually at North Aurora, where we see fishermen. They, fish come up to the face of the dam and can't get past, so it makes for a good fishing in a barrel type scenario. Not great for the fish, but great for the fishermen. So we see them sometimes getting too close, and they can get pulled in that way as well. We've had a lot of times where emergency workers, our police and our fire department go in and they try and help somebody, and they too put their lives at risk trying to save somebody. So we often have heard cases of Good Samaritans jumping in to try and save someone, only to have the worst of cases occur. So with that, that's just, one, the primary focus is on why we are looking to remove these dams that don't have a practical function in the state right now, impose more of a risk to health, but also they also have benefits to remove those beyond that. So with that, we'll also talk about, Mike, if you would? Yep. Just some of the other benefits that come across. First of all, I also want to just recognize that this isn't just the IDNR's position. Actually, the USDA also has studied this before and come to the same conclusion about the deadly nature of these dams, and how the removing of these dams is a benefit to the public, a benefit to recreation, and a benefit to the stream overall quality with aquatic habitat and of the such. So now, I'd like to actually turn it over to Steve Pescatelli. He's our streams biologist for the Office of Water Resources to talk about the aquatic benefits of dam removal.
Thanks a lot. It's a pleasure to be here, especially when you just recognized the Fox River tonight, how appropriate. I've been a streams biologist with the Division of Fisheries for 25 years here in this area, and I've been working on this issue a lot throughout my career. Dam removal is probably the single best thing you can do to improve a stream, and that's been recognized throughout the country. We went through an era of dam building, and now we're kind of starting to remove some of these dams, especially the ones that don't serve, you know, an important function. So what I want to talk to you about is the benefits of dam removal in terms of the aquatic ecosystem. I would imagine a lot of you are familiar with this study. It's kind of old news done back in 2000, funded by the DNR, where he looked at the impact of each dam on the Fox River, on the fish, the bugs, and water quality and habitat. And so I just want to quickly summarize this for you, and then review some of our research we've done with some of the removals that we've actually accomplished. So if you can give me the next slide. There's really, actually, go ahead and hit it, I think there's one, a graph that should come up here. Anyway, okay. So with any dam, there's really two effects, what we call the local effects, that are in the pool right behind the dam, and then kind of a system-wide effect. So we saw both of those on the Fox River, and this is really a summary of what we found on the Fox River. This first graph with the bars, this actually represents the number of fish that we collected per hour, which is indication of how many fish are there, obviously, and in the dammed areas, it's much lower than in the free-flowing areas. And that's true for a number of criteria, like the number of fish species, the number of mussel species, the bugs, sport fish, habitat, and a number of other criteria. So that's kind of the local effects, degraded habitat, degraded water quality, and degraded fish and macroinvertebrate communities. So the other system-wide effect is how the dams affect how fish move around and where they're at. As Mr. Berman mentioned, for many years, there was water quality problems, especially in the middle Fox, and so a lot of the more sensitive species were extirpated or were, they basically disappeared. What this graph shows is the occurrence of these species from the downstream end of the Fox at Dayton all the way up to Stratton Dam. So you can see there's a bunch of species that are missing right in the middle of the river, and it's because they were affected by the water quality years ago, and they can't move back in there. The fish can't get past these dams. So those are the two effects that we see and have seen on the Fox River. Okay, the next slide, please. We also have an index that we use that's based on the fish population. It's called the Index of Biotic Integrity, or IBI, and it's score, the score ranges from zero to 60. So you can see that that score is calculated for each dam in the upstream area where it's impounded, and in the downstream area where it's free-flowing. In every case, the downstream free-flowing has a much higher rating, average 46 versus a mean of 31 upstream. You can see the North Aurora there fit in with that quite nicely. So it's just not a very good place for fish upstream. The water slows down, the sediment falls out, it covers up the substrate, covers up the bugs, there's less for the fish to eat, and the fish can't move around to get to their foraging, spawning, overwintering areas. And as I said before, the combination of dams and historic poor water qualities affected really the whole region. I'm responsible for all the rivers in northeastern Illinois, Chicago, Displanes, DuPage, Fox, Cankey. We see a similar thing on all these rivers, and some of the streams are hurt even worse by the dams, the small streams. Next slide, please. So we've been able, we've had a few dam removals now, and we've been able to study the impacts. So this is a graph, these are graphs, the top one shows the number of fish species in the pool before dam removal and after dam removal. So you can see that clearly, after you move the dam, the fish move right back in there. It's really a pretty rapid process, the restoration of these upstream pools. And then, not only the number of species, but like I said before, the total number of fish is suppressed by the pooled habitat upstream, and we've seen that just skyrocket like in that small dam on Blackberry Creek. I think we got 76 fish when we sampled that pool before the dam removal, and almost 2,000 after the dam removal. The fish just moved back in there. And they established a new sucker run, smallmouth, channel catfish, longnose gar, and a bunch of species found out it has ran up there in the same year. It was really pretty fun to watch. The next slide, please. I think we're kind of wrapping it up here. We haven't had any big dam removals on the Fox to kind of use as an example, but here's an example of how the fish moved back into that area, were absent upstream of the dam. See there on the left in pre-project, all these species that were absent above the dam, and after the removal, they moved back in there and actually established and remain there now. So I think that might be close to the end here. Go ahead and see if that's, yeah. So I'm going to turn it back over to our engineers. I should say that since we've had a few dam removals, and you'll see these pictures in a minute, people are kind of worried about the river's going to dry up, what's it going to look like, won't be able to fish there, but now that we've removed a few of these dams, like on the Displanes, the big Hoffman Dam in Lyons, it's a beautiful spot now, river's flowing through there, people can canoe through there, the fish can move through there, and the world didn't end. I'm sure you probably remember the Batavia Dam. We had some public meetings, and there's a lot of people that get really up in arms, and it's kind of an emotional thing, but once they see how it looks after the dam's removed, you often get people to come around. So I'll turn it back over.
Thank you, Stephen. Steve will be around for questions afterwards, if anybody has any future. But we just want to talk on some of the other benefits. Briefly here, recreation, this is an inquiry working from communities all up and down the Fox about removing the dams. Montgomery, we've already done work at Yorkville, Aurora, a number of these, Batavia. We've had these conversations with communities, and they're wanting to open up these rivers, open up a passage for canoeing, and non-motorized boating is really on the increase throughout the state, and they're going to open up these river trail sections for larger-scale events where they can do a large section of river on public waterway so they can have full access to that without any safety concerns occurring. And lastly, I'd just like to talk about the economic benefits. Obviously, there's no structural maintenance costs that occur, and those are typically more minimum. There's no sediment removal, and that may or may not be an issue depending on the dam, but there's also no debris removal. A lot of times, you'll see debris getting piled up as a result of a dam that obviously is greatly reduced, maybe not 100%, but there is a significant reduction in debris. Loss of erosion, so because of the, all the roller effects immediately downstream of the dam, you may see a significant amount of erosion, particularly right there in the banks of the dam. We often have worked with communities to go back and repair that erosion that constantly occurs and has to be replaced, so that riprap has to be placed as it's washed away. And obviously, emergency response costs. Last thing we want to do is have to put personnel out on the water for that public safety issue, but again, it is a cost. But most, and most recently, what a lot of communities have been dealing with, with dam safety, is the liability lawsuits. And there has been a number of communities in Illinois that have had to deal with these liability lawsuits that extend into the millions of dollars at times. So just with these compounding benefits, we think it's a wise decision to look at the removal of these dams. So I just want to give you an example of what a couple of these dam removals have looked like here on the Fox and also throughout the state. So here is the North Aurora Dam before and after. You can see the removal, and with the Fox, because it is naturally such a wide stream, you don't see a drastic change in that landscape. You may see it a little locally, right there in the location of the dam. Again, once we work with a consultant or go through the design process, we'll be able to tell you exactly what that water surface would look like for the North Aurora community, so we can transpose what a average-day water surface elevation would look like here in the North Aurora community. Okay, Mike? Another example is the South Batavia Dam, just the before and after photos as well. Again, this is bird's-eye view, so it's a little difficult, but we'll have a couple others coming up. Mike, if you'll go to the next one. So we have a couple of removals here that we've done recently. The picture's on the left, up top is the removal, down below is the With Dam. At dam one, that's on the Displange River in Wheeling, that's kind of one of the dam removals where you don't see a huge impact as far as the water surface level. An example that Steve was mentioning earlier was the Hoffman Dam removal, and this was a significant structure, as you can see on the right-hand side, the dam being in place at the top right, and the removal being on the bottom left, or I'm sorry, bottom right. So you can see there, they left a portion of the dam in, cut a notch, and those are things that we would work with the village and the Park District to decide what exactly will be remaining after the project's done. That's all part of the discussion and coordination effort as well. Okay, Mike? A couple other dams, you heard the Blackberry Dam removal alluded to, that's on the left side. It was about a 12-foot-tall dam structure. You can see it on the left side in place in the upper left-hand corner, and removed in the lower left-hand corner. And our current dam that's being actually removed and near completion right now is in Danville, Illinois. This was another dam that we'd seen multiple losses of life at, the top right being while it was in place, you can see the deterioration and decay during a drought. We were lucky to get this picture during low flows, and then the lower right is where we're at right now with the construction process. So we just wanted to give you a couple of examples of what streams look like with and without the dam removal, and we can provide you much more, but that was just kind of a starting point for some of the work we've done here in the state. And as Steve mentioned, we've seen great benefits in it, and it brings the stream back to its natural flowing state. We see a lot higher dissolved oxygen, which is much better for the aquatic system. We obviously don't have the public safety concerns, and it's really improved recreation for a lot of these areas as well. So, Mike? So as we know, as we look at North Aurora, one of the main concerns with North Aurora is the mill race. So that is a factor that would be put into consideration. We think this is a beautiful area here that you have, and we want to keep that in place. So the consultant or whoever we have working with would ensure that we would keep water flowing through that bypass or that mill race. You know, there can be discussions on how much minimum flow would come through, how would we divide the flow, that would all be worked out with the village and with the Park District to ensure that you're getting what you want at the end of this process. And that's why we have in the IGA, the past one, that all parties have to be in agreement with the final resolve. So there could be something, the dam would be removed, but we'd put in a small rock riffle, something if we need to pull up the water surface slightly, but not have that safety factor or that restriction for fish passage or canoe or boat passage as well. And again, I'm sure there could be money, others will run into, you know, the concern of making sure that we have minimum impact to the park area here. Those things will all be addressed as you go through the design process. So from this point forward, the next steps we would look to seek is to get approval from all property owners involved, and then move into re-establishing a new intergovernmental agreement. So once that was in place, then, as Mr. Bosco mentions, we do have funding in place for this year, and we do have that set aside, we could look at moving forward with the project planning. From there, we go get permits, make sure we have all the land rights in place, essentially move that funding so that we can go into construction, and then post-construction, there is monitoring and maintenance. And at that point, that's all we wanted to share with you this evening. We're all here to answer any questions you may have, so I'll open up the floor for questions.
Are you Rick?
I am Wes. My name is Wes Couture.
Oh, Wes.
I apologize. I'm the acting engineering studies manager or chief for the Office of Water Resources, and we're a part of IDNR.
Yeah, I'm always in favor of the dam removal, but you forgot one important item is water quality.
Well, I think-
People actually drink the water in Aurora.
Yeah, so I think that's one thing that we mentioned, with the higher dissolved oxygen, you also don't get the elevated temperatures with stagnant water. It actually cools the water more. You've heard of algae bloom, algae blooms that occur, those are more common in stagnant water. Actually, with our Danville Dam removal project, there was a blue-green algae that formed near Champagne. I'm not sure if you guys heard about it up here, but it did a major fish kill, and it had tremendous impact on water quality. Our fisheries biologist down there was certain that there would have been a massive fish kill in the city of Danville if we hadn't had the dam already removed. So yes, water quality is- So yes, water quality is a huge benefit to that, and you know, that's kind of reflected by the fish community. You can see that come back. But you know, the dissolved oxygen levels, the temperature levels are lower when you have the dam removal and various others.
Nice report, nice display. Very well done.
Thank you.
I have a two-part question.
Yes.
My concern with the entire project is the budgeting cost. $2.5 to $3 million coming from a state that has a triple B minus bond rating. I don't think that's necessarily the best use of funds at this time, especially if it's not broke. Why are we gonna fix it? We have a beautiful riverfront. The second part of my question is, you know, there's five or six dams to the north and five or six dams to the south. What difference is just making, you know, taking one dam out, if Batavia doesn't take theirs, Aurora, Montgomery, and Yorkville don't take theirs out? So now, we're giving up a beautiful view, a beautiful riverfront view that we've got. We've got the potential of our riverfront, you know, diminishing. I just don't know if it's enough of an incentive for us to give away such a beautiful amenity.
I understand. You guys-- I'm sorry, I didn't mean to--
No, and I'm just saying, I think the cost is just, I just, I can't agree with spending $3 million.
I understand. You know, the first question that we typically answer with, or first response is, it only takes one loss of life to regret saying that the cost was not worth it. And we've seen a, we have document of it occurring here. If it happens again and we've missed this opportunity, how do we face those families? We actually talked with the mayor of Danville, and he said that was the single worst day in his life is when he had to deal with that, when he was onsite dealing with that situation. That council did not want that dam removed, but whenever it came down to that one single issue of one loss of life more, and you had this opportunity here today, would it be worth it?
You can make the same argument for the bike trail. One person rides a bike without a helmet. You know, I just don't know if that's a strong enough argument for me at this point. I think back to why the dams were originally implemented, and maybe we had too many put up, you know, on the Fox River, but they were put in for a reason, and I don't know if taking them out is gonna be, it's gonna go back to the way things were before.
Well, yeah, they were put in for a reason. It was for the mill races, my understanding. There could have been another reason, but I think that was the primary purpose of the dam in place, which we see these dams not serving their original purpose. They're no longer serving any purpose. Steve, did you have something?
I was gonna address your other question about whether it's worth removing this dam when all the other dams are in place. Well, we're actually addressing all the dams through the Fox River Study Group. Are you guys familiar with their work at all? You mentioned the water quality.
Yes.
And they're keen on that because the water quality in the Fox is impaired, and one way to improve that is to remove, we won't get all the dams out, but each one contributes to that benefit. And if we don't get all the dams out, like on Yorkville, we have fish passage there, so we can reconnect the whole river, so it'll be a much more vital, resilient river. So, I mean, we can't look at just this dam, we're looking at the whole system.
I don't, I mean, $3 million for a dam, and we've got, what, 10 or 20 dams? I mean, I just, first thing, that's broke. I don't think this should be a priority.
Yeah. Well, actually, the Fox River Study Group has addressed that. The alternative is to spend probably 10 times that on phosphorus removal. Because phosphorus is the culprit behind the dams. It causes the algae blooms, which degrades the water quality. So some towns are looking at $100 million to remove phosphorus to meet the standards in Illinois. So compared to that, it's a bargain.
Well, yeah.
And compared to life, loss of life, and I mean, you gotta look at the big picture.
The dam doesn't serve any purpose anymore, and plus, it's not coming in from North Aurora. Residents aren't paying for the dam. The money was allocated six years ago. We had this discussion.
It's been funded.
It's been funded by the state, and frankly, the fish are dying in a pool of water. The water isn't good to drink, and the water is flowing into Aurora. People in Aurora drink that water.
Can I ask you, the risk of flooding with removing the dam would increase or decrease the risk of flooding for the residents along the river, perhaps, most likely?
Yeah, so the first perception is that dams provide storage, flood storage for a flood event. Now, with a run-of-the-river dam where the water's constantly flowing over the top, that's just not the case. This will actually slightly reduce the flood frequency. At, to what degree, we haven't done the full study, that's part of the design process, but in similar dams, there is a small flood damage benefit or flood reduction when you remove these, essentially like removing a speed bump. It's not drastic, it's not gonna solve all the community's flood problems, but we will see a benefit to that.
So it's not gonna cause any flooding issues for the adjacent property owners that, you know, live in that area? That's kind of where I'm going, because if I have my house there--
And I'm with the Office of Water Resources. We have two divisions. We're with the capital program. There's also the regulatory side. So we have to go to our other counterparts and actually get a permit. They will not allow any project to be permitted that would increase flooding on another property.
Actually, it creates a little more shoreline.
Yeah, I would think it would speed things up, right? So things would just flow through, streamline, right? They streamline things. But I still like to ask the question, just because if I have a doubt on it, perhaps other people have doubts, and I wanna make sure you clear them now that you're present.
Correct. And just to answer that, yeah, we have to go through the full permitting process, and one of the responsibilities of obtaining an Office of Water Resources permit is to ensure that it's not having a negative impact on flooding of other properties.
So bottom line, the dam at this point serves not, the intended purpose that it was built for, it would increase the quality of water, it will increase the life, wildlife throughout, it would increase, perhaps, decrease the risk of flooding or at least not affected for our community, and it's not at the expense of our cost. It's through a fund, correct? A statewide fund.
Yep. And I would, Steve, I assume you would agree with all those statements as well?
It's all right.
Yeah. So I guess to answer the beauty, and some people really like the looks of the dam in place and everything, I was looking at the mill race, and it's got a nice, real, flowing water. It's kind of a beautiful little side channel, and that's kind of what would happen with the main stem, is if you took that dam out, you would see that flowing water instead of seeing that stagnant pool. You know, it's, I guess it's personal preference on aesthetics, but you know, that's just another consideration of what it will look like once you remove it. You'll see that flowing water, maybe look downstream 50 yards, 100 yards, and that's more of like what you'll see on the upstream side. You'll hear that gentle rushing water more than just the loud noise of the water crashing over the spillway. So I know there's a number of factors that come into play. You have to worry about what your, what your community would think of it and everything, so I know it's not an easy decision for anybody sitting in your position.
It is for me.
There's some, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
There's certainly some good arguments in favor of removing the dam, no question about that. I think we all admit it's been a sort of an attractive thing that we've had in the village, and we've had it illuminated for 35 years from the, from the bridge, so. But I think it's certainly to our benefit to have the ability to have recreation on the water without a threat of death. You know, not everybody has been, was here when we had a death on the dam, and it's, you know, those are not the things we wanna have happen again, so. Any comments? Discussion? State your feelings? Mr. Gaffino, have any?
Yeah, I agree 100% with everything you said. As a young man, I lived here my whole life, and I remember probably being, you know, 10 or 12, and several times, and we were always told, stay out of the river, but stay away from the dam. It's always been a big, I lived two blocks from it, so I mean, we all gravitated down here, and I was down there once when somebody got sucked under, you know. I remember the fire department came with boats, and they're trying to, it is a dangerous thing, so that along with, you know, maybe more use with kayaking and canoeing, you know, more recreation out there as well as cleaning up the river and more fish, it seems like it's a good opportunity for us. Little concerned about the nearing of the river, you know, like everybody is, but some of the pictures you had here, you know, like you said, some it's nice, too, it's free-flowing, you know? So I mean, can't say, I mean, it is nice to you looking up north, but I think it'll still be there, so I'm fine with that. Looking forward to--
I'm more in favor of it than I am against it, but I do have a question on erosion. I noticed in that aerial view that the east bank kind of comes in pretty abruptly towards the dam. Is there any concern of that eroding away? Because right below that is, I think, this building. And I'm just asking that question. Did you look at that issue and consider that in removing the dam?
And that will be flushed out fully in the design process. As you look downstream, and I haven't done, I'm a hydraulic engineer. We do the modeling, we find out what the velocities would be during a 100-year event, during a 500-year event, to make sure all those concerns are in fact. And actually, velocity and erosion is another permissible thing, just like increasing flood. We cannot increase velocities over 10% of what's there naturally without protecting it to ensure that further erosion doesn't occur. What I will tell you for sure is downstream, you probably see the erosion occurring there all the time, and that will obviously go away. If we move out the dam, there will be higher flows or faster flows on the upstream side. That's what we're trying to go for, is to aerate that water so it has higher dissolved oxygen. But we ensure that the project we leave is a stable one. You know, we're not gonna leave something that's gonna erode in two years when we have our fifth 100-year event in eight years, it seems like, so it is something that we address.
Thank you. Yeah. And I'll make a personal comment on that, too. One of the individuals that did drown, I think the last one that drowned, if there's only been one, it's the one where you're talking about, it happened to have been a relative of mine, and I know the impact it had on the family. So I can appreciate that concern as well. So I'm in pretty much favor of removing it as well. So, just to let you know.
Thank you.
I did notice in some of those pictures that where the, it had been removed, that there was some work done along the banks where there were some rocks, similar to what we've already--
Yeah, so some of those were at the request of the community because they had extra concerns of erosion. So sometimes if they request it, even if it's not needed, we'll consider that as part of the project. As we said, we all have to agree on an end product. In the case of Danville, the one in the lower right is the one that you'll see there, that was more of a condition of slope stability. That's about a 90-foot cliff with a road sitting at the very top of it with about one-to-one or less slope. So it's a very steep slope, and we wanted to ensure there was not any further erosion that occurred there. So there's just an extra added measure of safety there, because there was, I said, a very steep slope, had a road, a building sitting just beyond that road, so again, we wanted to make sure that there was nothing detrimental that occurred as a result of our project.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Steve?
So with that direction, what I would do is, at this point, we'll go back with the Fox Valley Park District, and of course, they're gonna have questions and whatnot that we'll address with the IDNR as we start to draft an IGA, because they control the entire Fox River Trail in our town, and the shoreline is obviously right against the trail, so they're gonna have their erosion questions as well. That being said, we would bring an IGA back when we have it to a committee of the whole, so everyone can see the language within the IGA first, make sure that everyone's comfortable, and then, you know, to consensus whatever is gathered, and then it goes to board for a final vote.
Mr. Palmquist, anything you'd like to say on behalf of the Fox Valley Park District?
I appreciate IDNR's presentation. I don't have any prepared statement, Mr. President. I thought the IDNR did a great job of characterizing the conditions and the facts as stated back some years ago with the initial IGA, and we look forward to the process and disseminating this information out to our board and allowing them to weigh in as well. We've had some board turnover since the last IGA was approved, so--
Very good, sir.
I'll bring back any comments to the staff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, that concludes item two. Item three, Mr. Bosco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item three on the agenda is a discussion of fee structure with the Southwest Fox Valley Cable Consortium. As you are aware, the village has been a member of the Southwest Fox Valley Cable Consortium since 2002. The group originally started with members from Oswego, Plano, Yorkville, Sandwich, and North Aurora. We conglomerated together at a time to get a better negotiating position for multiple issues when Comcast and AT&amp;T were providing cable back then, and through that group's work, they've been able to provide the village with peg access in the form of a cable station where they promote events and information about the village. They've videotaped events. They have public access at a studio in Wabonzi College in which they train people, they train, they can train students, they can train community members who are interested in learning how to videotape and produce programming for the public access channel. They also record people at the studio, too, local civic groups or whatnot trying to promote events. And most recently, and significantly for the village, they provide all of the recording of our village board and committee of the whole meetings at this time. Basically, a couple of years ago, back in 2017, we were discussing recording our video, videoing our meetings, and at that time, there was some discussion about the fees that we paid and into the group. The current fee structure is that we provide 40% of our Comcast and soon-to-be Metronet, we only have a few subscribers on Metronet right now, but 40% of all our Comcast and Metronet franchise agreement fees that we collect would ultimately go to the Cable Consortium to provide those services. And at this time, one of the concerns that was brought up back then was that, in the amount of money that we would give, that about 50% of it on average or so was being given back to us via a refund. So basically, you know, we would pay a certain amount, so as you see in your memo, just to point it out, in the last five years, we've essentially, on average, given the consortium just under $90,000 annually, and then after we get a portion of that refunded, essentially, we've been giving them that $90,000 becomes $50,000 on average. With that said, we went back to the consortium, and we have our Cable Consortium rep in the crowd tonight, as well as the manager of the consortium in the studio, and what we did is said, hey, you know, instead of relying on a rebate or a refund in the event that maybe operationally the consortium can't afford to give refunds, it was never a guarantee that we would give $90,000 and get $40,000 or $45,000 back. We said, is there any way to put a more structured funding schedule in place where each municipality member would pay a share, but you would know that what you're paying is what's going into the consortium, and you're not, you know, guessing on whether or not you would get a refund. And though they have given several refunds over the years, the last several years, there has been years in the far past where we haven't got one. So this was a way to get a more guaranteed fee structure. You know exactly what you're paying annually for our budget when we do our budget process, and we know exactly how much we're paying to the consortium on an annual basis. So with that in mind, they worked with their communities, and they came up with a funding structure that would reduce the amount we pay in from 40% of our franchise fees to 30% of our franchise fees. And then they would issue a refund only in the event that they had a surplus of a certain amount in their operational funds, and then in those cases, they would proportionally divvy out the surplus to each member municipality. That's not a guarantee. It's, once again, it's just there in case they do hit that benchmark, then they would refund anything above that. It also requires the village to pass a tax, if you will, a fee. So in each of our Metronet and franchise, or excuse me, Metronet and Comcast franchise agreements, we have the ability to pass along up to 53-- agreements, we have the ability to pass along up to 53 cents per user. So anyone with Comcast, anyone with Metronet gets their monthly bill. The village in the agreement has the ability to add a 53-cent charge to that bill. That portion, what we're being asked for is in addition to paying the 30%, is that we would also enact a portion of that 53 cents per bill per household, and that money would be collected specifically for the consortium's capital budget to put towards future equipment. So to put that in perspective, just, just so everyone's on the same playing field, back in 2018, we gave the consortium approximately $93,000, you know, roughly. So we give about $225,000 on just Comcast revenue right now annually is what we take in. Out of that 225,000, we give them approximately 90,000. With the 30%, we would be giving 67,500, so just about 65 to 70,000. So once again, we currently give them 90. We typically get a refund, so we end up paying 50. The new fee would be around 65 to 70, but then you wouldn't have to worry on whether or not you were actually going to get a refund or not. You would have a set fee in place. So the reason it's before the committee of the whole tonight is in order to move forward, it would basically require an amendment to the IGA for the funding structure of the, of the consortium, and therefore it has to go to the village board. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. We have representatives from the consortium.
I have a question. That 53 cents tax to consumers, how did that even get brought up? Because I, I mean, they're already paying a tax on the franchise fee. This is just another add-on tax, and I don't see any consumers getting anything additional for an additional tax. So in my opinion, that's a double taxation because they're already paying the franchise fee getting passed through on their bill. Secondly, I, I've never been a big fan of the whole consortium agreements. What exactly are we going to get for paying another 15 to 20,000 a year? I don't think we should pay a dime above what we've been paying historically. And what accountability does the consortium have? Because what, what imperative do they have to maintain fiscal accountability if they know as long as they don't hit this surplus amount, they won't have to pay it back? If they could just keep expanding their budget, I'd like to know what kind of accountability there is. And the third part of this is, since we've implemented our videotaping, have we gotten any response as to how many people are watching this? How many subscribers the channel has? Is there a way to just kind of see the impact and the reach it's getting? Because if they want us to pay more money, and we've got maybe three people a month watching, I just, I don't, you know, I want to make sure we're being a good steward of our resources.
So currently, the videos are posted, they're basically given to us, and then we post them on the village's YouTube page?
What's the point of paying for public access if 100% or 90% of viewers are going to YouTube to view it? I don't see the point. Just like paying a hundred thousand a year to go to the movie and then watching it at home by night.
You know, one of the things that things really have changed since we first went into this franchise agreement and for what our PEG was supposed to be. And I think, you know, in today's world, it seems like it's so much easier to put things over the internet, and everyone can get it whenever they want it. I mean, they can be sitting out there, and they can go to it any time of the day, as opposed to what we might get from consortium and what's presented, because we don't know when it's being presented, and it may be at a time when, you know, we're not able to watch it. Over the internet, as we produce it, and as we make it available, it's available all the time, and it costs us a heck of a lot less money than what we're spending for the consortium. As far as the number of people that use it, I think that's always been a question that we've had and never been able to get an answer to. I don't know, we obviously don't take any kind of surveys or whatever to do that, so. I think it's, you know, we've, we may be at the point where it's not what it was meant to be in the beginning, sort of like our dams on the Fox River. They were great 100 years ago when we needed that power to operate all our equipment and our mills and et cetera. But, you know, right now, we have a better source of that information coming to each and every one of us over the internet quicker, more timely. And we can do that ourselves at a lot less, you know, we're spending, in my opinion. Other comments?
What would the production cost be to do videos? Do we have an idea?
So last time this came up, we talked about what it would be in-house, and it really comes down to what the village board would like. If the village was to move forward, the staff would have to update the numbers, but essentially, we would have to buy a camera for a few thousand dollars, and we would have to record the meetings, which means we'd probably have to pay an employee or an outside service a couple thousand dollars in overtime a year annually to videotape it. And then we control our YouTube channel, so we would just upload it to YouTube. So last time we looked at it, it was a reasonable cost. It wasn't that, the first year, I think it was 10,000 or so or less. And then if we did it that way, where we were just YouTube-ing our videos. The, the thing, too, to remind you is the, the one thing you lose if you, well, more than one thing, but if you lose the consortium, you lose the ability to have access to the studio at Wabansy. I don't know if that's, you know, important to the board or not, but that's, that's important for the consortium's purpose. They have that studio access where people can go learn how to videotape their own public access and, and use the equipment and whatnot to do that. The other thing they provide that we would have to decide as a village or whether or not we wanted to go that route was to, to present information on the cable channel. So, you know, through our franchise agreements, we're given the access in a cable channel in order to put information up there. Let's just call it rudimentarily a slideshow. So you have to buy a character generation system typically for that. That could be 10 to 20,000 if you did that. And then you would have to buy the equipment to upload it to the inner, to the cable channel. So there's a couple routes. If the village does this, you know, on our own, you're talking about whether or not you want that cable channel. That's a second expense. The initial is obvious that the village videotapes its meetings. That would be something we would continue or want to continue, the staff would recommend doing. We would just have to give you pricing on some cameras.
Steve, I, you know, and one other thing I think we need to also consider is the fact that a lot of people nowadays are cutting the cord. Our peg channel is only available to Comcast subscribers. You know, we all have friends and neighbors who are cutting the cord using things like Hulu and Amazon Prime and all these other streaming services. And that's really where, you know, the, the trend is going. I agree with a lot of what Dale is saying, and as far as having access to the studio and things like that, I mean, $90,000 a year for, you know, maybe a handful of people every year or so to go, I, I just don't think that it, being a good steward of taxpayer funding to, and by the way, is, is that studio available for a fee? Like if a group wanted to come in and use it and pay to rent it?
Yeah, and before, I'll ask, Mike Reynolds is in the crowd. I mean, he'd be the best to answer that question, but before we do, I will say this, the...
They might, they may want to change their funding structure to something like that then, then just have a studio available for rent, but I don't really, I think...
Yeah, I honestly don't know, because, well, before we get into that, the question about the peg, the, each cable provider has a peg channel. So even though we collect, it's kind of funny, but even though we collect revenue from Comcast and now Metronet, technically AT&amp;T also, all three of them have or will have, Metronet I think is in the process of establishing theirs, they all have the ability to view a cable, a, a public educational governmental channel on them. So all subscribers would still have access to a governmental channel. But that being said, as far as renting, yeah, absolutely. Doug Bachin is here. He is our rep for the cable consortium. He represents village in North Aurora.
I just want to address a couple of the comments that have been made. To trustee Curtis' point that people are cutting the cord, there's certainly some of that going on. All these channels we're talking about, you know, are available on the internet as well. You can, you can stream them. So even if you don't have Comcast, you don't have Metronet, you can see the full programming suite on the internet. You had mentioned the, the 53 cents earlier, the taxation. Couple points on that. First of all, as, as Mr. Bosco mentioned, it's a maximum of 53 cents as per the contract. It would much more likely be 30 cents or less, somewhere between 15 and 30. That, the ability to put that clause in had to be run through Comcast who reviewed the consortium's capital expenditures plan, you know? Cameras, tripods, switchers, all that kind of stuff wears out, and so that's, that's where the capital would be funded from. And the final thing I'll address before we turn over to anybody else was you had a question about accountability, which is a good question. A part of the accountability, of course, is, is me or whoever this, this body chooses to be the, the representative on the consortium. So there's myself, Mr. Mulliner from Plano, and representatives typically from Yorkville and Sandwich that are all watching the budgets and those kind of things. And, and I would argue that the, the proposal that refunds are mandatory once a $75,000 budget or reserves, I should say, are exceeded, that's a step in the right direction. That's not, been there before. Historically, you know, the, the reserves were higher when we were collecting funds and having expenditures associated with the contract negotiations, paying lawyers and all that kind of stuff. So we've had higher budgets in the past, and I think that the latest round here is an attempt to enforce even more accountability. So just want to address those points. Thank you.
Any other comments?
So the, the fee was for the purpose of financing, upkeeping equipment, that I'm assuming is expensive, right?
Yes, sort of.
Okay.
Per subscriber, yes.
Right? Yeah. So that's basically what the fee addresses a lot of the time. And other, we had larger budgets at some point. I mean, I, I think it's important to keep our, our people informed. I, I do understand that avenues of information change throughout, you know, the days that go by, right? So new networks and new channels come out. Kids playing YouTube quite a bit. So I, I get that. You know, I just want to make sure that, you know, we still keep our people informed, and we keep our budget fair to our taxpayers, you know, so. But I wanted to make sure I understood perfectly what the taxation was or that fee was.
Until we're clear, the 53 cents is in both franchise agreements. And Kevin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that was in, I'm almost positive it was in a previous franchise agreement before I, I started with the village years ago. Ultimately, that's a fee that when we passed our franchise agreement, we made it clear to the consortium that we were not looking to pass that fee onto the residents at that time. It was something that's language in there should we ever want to, which is, this is the first time they've asked for it in, in the years. So it's been in the agreement for years. We've just never asked for it. So I just wanted to point that out. So we did make a statement when that was put in, and that, to my knowledge, that is standard language in franchise agreements.
Our next step on this, go to a committee or come back with a recommendation for the...
A recommendation. This is the committee to talk about whether or not this fee structure is in line with what the village board would like to see. So the next step would be is if this fee structure is acceptable, I would take it to, they would go back to the consortium. They would have to draft an amended IGA and then go to all the villages, and we would all have to amend the IGA essentially for this funding structure to go into place, which means it would go back to the village board to vote to approve that IGA.
I don't see a strong support in, in carrying on the way we've, where we've gone, unless I'm reading things wrong.
So is the direction to go back to the consortium?
Well, I think you need to come up with something we can either approve or deny, right? So we need to present something to us, so.
Do we have the option of doing it ourselves and withdrawing from the consortium? I mean, I, I think it's kind of a relic that kind of, whose time has passed.
So trustee Curtis, your question is, do we have the ability to come back, let's say, to another committee and present an alternative option where the, the village would videotape our own meetings and whatnot?
Very good.
Is that what the...
I think that's...
Okay.
Yeah. It's either, you know, that's our question, and I think one question is, are we going to continue on with the consortium? That's one question. The other question is, what are we going to do in place of it then? Now, whether you solve that all at one time or you solve it in, in two different sections? So whichever way you want to accomplish. Any other comments?
No.
Entertainer motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed or adjourned?